It is six o'clock and I call to order this meeting of the Kerrville City Council. I'd ask you at this time if you would stand for the invocation and follow by the place of allegiance. Father, we have a lot of decisions to make tonight and I pray that we will do so fairly and with clear sense of the nature of those decisions and that they make a positive difference in our community and for all the citizens. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have announcements of community interest and remember that the purpose of this part of the agenda is for recognitions, reminders of events as stated on the agenda under this item and then also it's not a time to express opinions or positions on policy matters. Okay? Stuart?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to say welcome to everybody who's here tonight. First meeting of 2019. I hope everybody is dealing with cedar fever. I know it's kind of causes problems right now. We only have two announcements tonight. The first one is the Daddy and Daughter Sweetheart Dance. This is the city's 11th annual Daddy Daughter Sweetheart Dance. It's going to be held Saturday, February 16th, at the Hill Country Youth Events Center. Tickets are on sale now, both at the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department on Bandera Highway and also on the City of Kerrville's website. Now, all tickets must be purchased in advance. There's no ticket sales at the door. This event sells out fast. I think we had 500 attendees last year, which was double from the year before.
Wow.
So, we certainly expect to reach that number again this year. That's a lot of fun. It's a fun event and we'll try and share some pictures from it after it's open. And the other new announcement, you may have noticed the paneling, the new paneling along the wall. We have a new sound system that we are trying out tonight. We installed it this week. We have new speakers in the chamber here and tonight's the first night to try it out. We have Frank Escamilla over here. He's our audio engineer and he's going to be here with us to make sure that everything goes smoothly. His advice for speakers both up there and here is just to speak normally into the microphone. So, hopefully we'll enjoy that and everybody can hear better. All right, thank you very much.
Good, good. We come to the Visitors Citizens Forum.
I've got a couple of announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
First one, I'd get in trouble if I don't announce. My grandmother's 99th birthday is Friday.
Oh.
So, I just thought I'd throw that one out there. And the other is an announcement of a past event that, I don't know who knew about it or heard about it, but our own Vincent Vocal here did a pretty special Christmas Eve free meal for the community. It went off pretty well. It was something that, as I understand it, he'd been trying to do for a while and then put it together with, I don't know his last name, Cole.
Cole Brown.
Cole Brown. He and Cole pretty much put it together and they ended up with the help of some free space donated by Buzzy at Buzzy's Barbecue, they put on a surprisingly busy event. It was about 300 meals served and I joined in making some pies and so it was, it was pretty good and hopefully it's the first of many future.
Kind of make it traditional.
Yeah, it turned out to be Christmas Eve, yeah.
For people who didn't have a place to go or, okay.
That's good, good. Thank you. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any item not already listed on the agenda. No discussion will take place or action. Since items are not posted, the council cannot respond to questions but may refer questions to staff or place on a future agenda. Individuals have four minutes to speak. Now, let me mention one other thing not directly related to the Visitors Citizens Forum that has decorum, has to do with decorum here in the council chamber. At the last meeting, we had a number of outcries from the citizens who were here and I should remind you, please, we're not to have that. If they're disruptive or disrespectful, allowed comments made, persons can be removed from the council chamber, but obviously we want to avoid that. Okay, do we have anyone to speak at the Visitors Citizens Forum?
I do not have any.
Okay.
Mario Garcia.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Councilman. I pay my application, sorry, to be on the Charter Review Committee and I was wanting to express that interest.
Okay.
Wanted to let you, go ahead.
I'm not sure you're in order because that is an item on the, on the agenda tonight and you will have an opportunity, as I understand it, when we come to the consideration of that committee to, to speak.
I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I understand that we have a presentation tonight and I'm going to call Chief Knight for that purpose.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, this agenda item is for the presentation of the Certificate of Recognition for the Texas Police Chiefs Association and here to present that is Max Westbrook Jr. Mr. Max Westbrook Jr. is the Program Director for the Texas Police Chiefs Association Recognition Program, Best Practices. Thank you, Chief Knight, I appreciate it. You know, I didn't have any cedar fever until I came out here and walked in the door and like five people talked to me, "How is your cedar fever doing?" So, I'm starting not to feel good, so hopefully I make through this.
Reference it a little more.
Mayor, Councilmember, citizens of Kerrville, good evening. My name is Max Westbrook. I'm the Director of the Recognition Program for the Texas Police Chiefs Association and a member of the Texas Police Chiefs Association. I'm honored this evening to be representing the TPCA and the Best Practices Program. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of over 1,100 professional police chiefs throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery and quality of police services. I'm here this evening to present the Kerrville Police Department with a certificate of re-recognition for continuing to maintain their compliance with Texas law enforcement's best business practices for law enforcement for the past four years. Several years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement agencies. Many of you know about accreditation programs for schools, universities, and hospitals. They are all programs of professional excellence and all require proof of compliance with a set of professional standards. Ours is very similar. It is a voluntary program and agencies must meet 168 very difficult standards. The standards are based on Texas law, Texas court decisions, and contemporary best practices standards as identified by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations such as the use of force, protection of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, property and evidence management, and patrol investigation operations, just to name a few. Approximately eight years ago, the Kerrville Police Department was among the first in the state to become a recognized agency and it was not easy to do. The agency had to conduct a complete audit of its policies, procedures, and operations in order to meet these standards. Since that time, the agency has submitted annual reports that were reviewed to ensure they continue to meet standards and continue to provide the citizens of Kerrville with effective police service. In November of last year, two trained assessors, police chiefs and command officers from other state agencies, spent two days making another onsite assessment of the Kerrville Police Department. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, they rode with field officers, and they ensured compliance with all 168 standards. Their report was then sent to the recognition committee, which is comprised of nine active police chiefs from around the state of Texas. The committee voted to award recognized status to Kerrville and that vote was unanimous. During this process, the Kerrville Police Department has once again proven that it meets or exceeds the best practices standards for professional law enforcement services in the state of Texas. Of the only, this is my favorite part of this right here, of the over 2,400 law enforcement agencies in the state of Texas, only 150 have achieved recognized status. Only 72 have been re-recognized. This evening, we officially recognize the Kerrville Police Department for their outstanding performance. What does this mean for your community? The recognition program assures that both city management and the citizens of Kerrville and the police, that their police department is operating in a manner that reflects best business practices in the state of Texas. It means your police department is continually striving for professional excellence. It means your police department is one of the very best in the state of Texas. This certificate we present this evening is symbolic. While it is clearly the mark of professional excellence, the real value in the program is the process they must complete to receive the certificate. And once again, this is not the end of the process. The department will continue to submit annual reports to ensure compliance and in four years, we will be back. It was my honor to do this exact same speech four years ago in this chamber. The Kerrville Police Department is a leader in law enforcement and you should be very proud of their accomplishments. Chief Knight, would you please come forward? You're behind me. I didn't know that. See, that's why we wear dark uniforms.
Be still.
The Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation, to all those who see this certificate, the Kerrville Police Department, having fulfilled the necessary qualifications and mandatory requirements of the Texas Police Chiefs Association, Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Recognition Program, by voluntarily proving their compliance with Texas law enforcement best practices, the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation Board of Directors does hereby award this certificate of recognition. Congratulations, Chief.
Chief, would you introduce in a minute Officer Krebs and the other officers that are with you?
Absolutely. I'm waiting to be told what to do. She's our Support Services Lieutenant, but she is also our Program Manager for the department. She's done a fantastic job over the last eight years of being a Program Manager and she does phenomenal work.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Phil Langstrom, who's the Investigations Lieutenant for the department, he also does phenomenal work and he's also been involved in the recognition program as everybody has. Lieutenant Phil Langstrom, or John Klein, the uniform threw me off. Our Patrol Lieutenant in Field Operations, he's in charge of all field operations and they're intimately involved in this entire process. And Assistant Chief Curtis Thomason, who also was a Program Manager, so he knows the challenges that we've all faced for the last eight years, even ready to come up for re-recognition. Thank you all.
This represents real professionalism in our police force here and they are greatly appreciated. And Mr. Westbrook?
Yes, sir.
You probably will not be here, but later in regard to the cedar fever, later in this council meeting, I'm going to introduce an ordinance outlawing cedar pollen from December through early March.
You've got a hot vote.
Yeah, okay, all right. Now, I come to the consent agenda that will be, these items will be considered together and voted on together unless a council member wants to pull away.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items that are in the consent agenda.
All right.
I second.
Got a motion, a second? All in favor with the raised hand? Okay, all right. At this time, one of our council members could not be here for a 5:30 meeting and so we need to go into an executive session, we hope about 20 to 30 minutes, and I would like a motion in that regard and, or I, and if you will also note under the state law what sections we're observing.
I'll make a motion under, that we go into executive session under 551087, Business Prospect Economic Development.
And section 551?
I said that already, right? 551087?
Yeah, okay. And, and 071. All right.
I second.
Okay, there's a second? All in favor, raise a hand. Okay. Like I say, 20 or 30 minutes. Enjoy getting to know each other and so forth and then we'll be, we'll be back. And we are back in order at 6:43 and we're going to move to item 7D. Ms. Brown, if you would read that for us.
Resolution number 01-2019, establishing the city's support of legislation during the 86th session of the Texas Legislature to finance a hotel conference center.
All right, and I'm going to ask the city manager to respond to that.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is really pursuit of a program that the state has under section 351 of the tax code that 39 other Texas cities have taken advantage of and it's a rebate of the hotel tax off a new project that, that would have otherwise gone to the state. So, the, the city collects 13% hotel tax, 7% goes to the city and 6% goes to the state. This would be a rebate of that 6% back to the city for up to 10 years to help pay for the, the funding necessary for a public-private partnership for a new conference center hotel. This local support needs to be in place for this bill, so that's why we're asking you all to consider this resolution. I'll be in front of the Commissioner's Court on Thursday to ask for their support as well. And then I'll also be talking to the CVB and others to, to basically answer questions and ask for their support. So, you'll recall that the city actually commissioned a study back in 2018 that did some research into what we could support here locally in terms of a full-service hotel and conference center, the number of rooms, the square feet of meeting space, what would be the long-term market demand for, for such a facility, what are the other competitors that are in the region, and how would we compete, what would be the average daily room rate, the impact to the local economy, and so forth. And so, since then, we have been pursuing a funding package, if you will, on how we're going to get to that public-private partnership. So, this is, this is a tax that's already being collected by the state. It just means that it's not a new tax. We would just be getting that back from the state on a rebate basis over a period of So, the study also determined that there's a large amount of meeting and lodging demand for our market that's not being captured. So, this is business that we're not getting today that would be coming to this new hotel. This is economic development in a real sense. It's importing dollars into our community from elsewhere with new, not just new, new dollars, but also jobs coming into our community. And again, this would be money that would otherwise just be going to the state on a new project. So, tonight, we're asking for you all to adopt this resolution so that we can then carry that to our state rep and our senator who have agreed to sponsor a bill for us. So, at this point, I don't take any questions from the council.
Okay, we have questions from the council.
Mark, I think it's important for people to understand, there has been nothing put on paper that says we, it would be a hotel that would hold 10,000 or 1,000 size, location. There's nothing in place like that. That is all yet to come.
It is to a large degree. The study did give some perimeters about how many rooms it should be and how many square feet of meeting space based upon all their research and surveying that they did, but the exact number and how, how much it's going to cost, where it's going to go, all of that is really to be decided at a future date. Because we don't have a partner yet, a developer. They may have some ideas of their own about where they would like it and, and what needed to be included in the facility because they, they got to make it work financially. So, they'd be on the hook for the hotel and then operation of the, of our conference center.
Okay, but just to be clear, so that everybody out in the world knows, we didn't just vote to create a convention center. We're, we're just saying that if we decide to create a convention center at some later date, we're setting up a piece of the funding source for that, that public aspect of the creation.
Right.
Because if we don't say that clearly, it's going to get reported that we just voted to do a convention center tonight, which we're not doing right now.
Well, as you said, this would just be one component of the public investment to make this work. Because it would be a publicly owned conference center and probably a privately owned hotel on city property. So, you know, all that, the details have to be worked out, but this is just one piece of that stack that would be required for public financing.
And you're, and we'll be talking to the county just to, to get their consensus?
We'll be asking for the same resolution.
Okay.
All right. Okay, do we have questions or comments from the audience?
I have a speaker request from Charlie McElvein.
Okay, Charlie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Certainly Kerrville needs additional product and this is one form of assisting in moving that forward. The Convention and Visitors Bureau is totally supportive of this resolution.
All right, thank you. Charlie McElvein is Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. All right.
I don't have any other speaker request forms.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion on this item 7D.
I'd move that we, we approve resolution 01-2019.
Okay, Mr. Rudy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Eichner, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. It passes unanimously. Okay, we now go into a public hearing. Anyone may speak on public hearing items. They don't have to sign in, but if they do, that's okay. You'll be limited to four minutes. If you come to the podium, be sure to state your name and street address for the record. And it is 6:49. Okay, Mr. Paxton? I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, would you read that in?
Ordinance number 2019-02, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for an approximate 6.790 acres consisting of lots 1 and 2, HEB addition, and portions of lot 300-302 and lots 348 through 349, block 48 of the Shriner Second Edition, both subdivisions within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as the property located at 300 Main Street, State Highway 27, by removing the property from 11-C zoning district and placing it within, within, by removing with, I'm sorry, within the central business zoning district, CBD containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of $2,000, ordering publication and providing other matters relating to the subject.
All right, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request from HEB to extend the CBD zoning onto the entirety of their property. Their current property is split between the 11C and CBD Central Business District. Request is consistent with the Convergent Plan as there should be a strong focus on redevelopment and catalyzing a renewed public interest in the area within the Catalyst Area Number 1, downtown. Planning Commission recommended this case for your approval and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Anyone like to speak for or against this matter of zoning?
I have one speaker request form from Lawrence Walker.
My name is Lawrence Walker. I live at 406 West Water Street in a house that happens to have been in my family since the mid-1950s. I walk to HEB. I love where it is. I am not here tonight, the good news is I'm not here to talk about cedar trees.
Yeah.
I'm here to talk about oak trees. As you look from the parking lot of the current HEB into the houses and the lots that this ordinance concerns, there are some gorgeous legacy oaks. I hope that both HEB and the city of Kerrville will respect and protect some of those largest oak trees as the design of the store may or may not occur, whether or not this ordinance is passed. But if it is passed, I hope that the city will, will promote with the company the protection of some of those gorgeous trees. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lawrence.
I don't have any other speaker request forms.
All right, okay. I'm going to gavel the public hearing close and ask the council if they have any questions, beginning with place one.
No, on this item. I'll speak on the next one.
Okay.
I'm good.
I think it's exciting to hear about this.
All right, okay. Do we have a motion in this regard?
I'd make a motion and we pass the ordinance 2019-02.
All right, Mr. Rudy? Do I, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Mr. Vocal. All right, all in favor of this, if you'll let it be known by the raised hand. Okay? And we gavel out of that public hearing and into another one, it's 6:53. And if you'll read that for us, Ms. Brown?
Ordinance number 2019-03, abandoning, vacating, and closing two public rights-of-way consisting of a portion of Hay Street as it extends between the northwest right-of-way of Main Street, State Highway 27, and the southwest right-of-way of Jefferson Street and consisting of approximately 0.5792 acres and a portion of the 16-foot public alley located between Hay Street and Quinlan Street, addition, adjacent to lots 1 and 2, block 2 of the HEB addition, between lots 315, 316, and the northwest 43 feet of lot 333, and the southwest 13 feet of lot 334, block 50, and consisting of approximately 0.726 acres. Said rights-of-way are out of the Charles Shriner Second Edition to the city of Kerrville, a subdivision of Kerr County, Texas, according to the platte recorded in volume K, pages 107 of the deed records of Kerr County, Texas, making a finding that neither the street nor the alley is required for present or future public use, providing for the terms and conditions of abandonment, vacation, and closure, providing for the furnishing of a certified copy of this ordinance for recording in the official public records of Kerr County, Texas, as a quitclaim deed authorizing the city manager to take all necessary action to effectuate the abandonment, vacation, closure, and quitclaim, and providing for a public hearing.
All right. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Kerrville 2050 Convergent Plan item as it helps the city and opportunities for existing local business to expand their operations in order to achieve the overall goal of balancing, broadening, and diversifying the city's tax base and to help to shift the tax burden away from residential property owners. Kerrville 2050 Plan also promotes the revitalization and reinvestment of downtown. HEB has requested the closure of Hay Street between Main Street and Jefferson to accommodate the relocating of their store adjacent to the current store. Street closure ties the CBD district with the HEB's future plan for the redevelopment of the site as located in the Strategic Catalyst Area Number 1. I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Or after the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Paxton will be available to answer questions. Do we have speakers?
I have one speaker request form from Bunny Bond.
Okay. Bunny?
My name is Bunny Bond. I live at 213 Stephanie Street in Kerrville. I'm speaking in opposition to the closure of the 300 block of Hay Street. This is not the first time this request from HEB has come before the Kerrville City Council. The Kerrville City Council refused the request back in the 1990s and I spoke in opposition to the closure of Hay Street at that time. Hay Street is eight blocks long. It begins at Water, crosses Main Street, crosses Jefferson, crosses Shriner, and continues north across MacFarland, Barnett, East Davis, Pearl, and Miller. At the north end of Hay Street is the only homeless shelter in the city of Kerrville and in Kerr County. Salvation Army makes it possible for people to lodge there from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM with dinner and breakfast served. Closure of the 300 block of Hay Street blocks direct access from the State Highway to the shelter. There is a traffic light at the corner of Hayes and Main and many people use that 300 block of Hay Street to cut across to the major east-west streets west of Cindy Baker. The traffic study in the 1980s by Texas A&amp;M cited that Kerrville lacked east-west access streets and it is not in the best interest of traffic to block access to those east-west arteries in the central business district. HEB is not making use of the traffic light at Hayes and Main as access to the parking lot for the grocery store. Many people use that light for act- Many people use that light for access to the current parking lot. As I stated before the Planning and Zoning Commission, HEB could flip the gas pumps to the east side of Hayes Street and place the store at the west end of the lot. That would allow 300 block of Hayes Street to remain open. A larger store means more traffic. I've not counted the number of parking spaces on the diagram, but the projected size of the store would seem to mean an increase in traffic hazards. HEB needs to make use of that light for traffic access to their parking lot. I question whether Texas Department has been consulted about the closure of Hayes Street, as Main Street is the State Highway. I question whether the Fire Department and the Police Department have been consulted for an opinion as to their access to the businesses and neighborhoods served by Hayes Street. I question whether a complete plot of the entirety of the Hayes Street area has been presented to the City Council for analysis before making a decision, as the closure of the 300 block of Hayes Street affects the residential neighborhood, local businesses, traffic access, and emergency vehicle access. I've not seen any mention of a reference to permission from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, often referred to as TCEQ, and the increased number of pumps that HEB is planning. I want to express my concern about the location of the number of pumps on the west end of the HEB property and the proximity to town and the Guadalupe River. I respectfully request that the City Council table this request and ask staff to complete further investigation and report back, so that the City Council is able to deliberate this street closure with more information. I do not believe that this request is in keeping with the intent of the Kerrville 2050 Plan and the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville. I ask that each member of the City Council drive the length of Hayes Street and ponder this decision for the future of this area and the city. If the City Council moves forward with this request tonight, I'm asking that the City Council members vote against the closure of the 300 block of Hayes Street. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Paxton, if you would. Can you address any of those concerns that have been expressed?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, do we have the project engineer with applicant here today?
Yeah, okay.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, my name is Mark Johnson, I'm with Stantech Consulting Services in San Antonio. In regards to the concerns, we also have our traffic engineer that can address some of the traffic questions. In regards to TCEQ permitting, all of HEB's fuel stations are permitted through the TCEQ, we register the tanks with TCEQ. We follow state regulations, we follow local regulations, as any of the fuel stations that HEB has built in the past. We've always followed regulations in that regard. As far as flipping the store and locating the store on the north end facing the other direction, we've looked at that, that's been considered over the years, and really, this is, what we've, we've come to the conclusion that this is the best orientation, that works for the property, the surroundings, what property that HEB can acquire, and to be able to build a store while the existing store stays in operation. So, I think I hit most of the points. Were there other questions that I could answer?
Any, in regard to fire and police issues in terms of the closing of the street?
Hi, my name is Bob Akteron, I'm with Boe Consulting Traffic Engineers, we're at Austin, Texas. I'm not specifically aware of what conversations have been had with fire and EMS on the closure of the roadway. However, from a traffic perspective, we have sat down with Texas Department, we are in constant communication with them on our proposal. We are currently going through a traffic analysis that we're working with the city and Texas Department on. Part 1 of that study has been submitted, and we're now transitioning over to part 2 of that study, and we're actively working with the city and Texas Department to get those processed, and the goal being approved.
And I would add that we have talked to the fire chief and the police chief, and that is not a concern.
All right, okay.
Can you elaborate a little bit on what you said approved? Is there, is there some question to Texas Department that you need to get approved, or what are we talking about?
No, so, I approach traffic studies a little differently than other consultants do. Typically, historically, what a consultant would do is do a full boat TIA and submit it. TIA's are actually two parts. The first part is where are cars going to and coming from? The second part would be the analysis of those cars and how the network is performing. We have seen historically by doing one full boat TIA, if the part 1 portion of the study, where cars are coming from and going to, if the agencies, the reviewers don't agree with that, we've just wasted a lot of time and money doing the second part, when they can't even review it because they don't approve the first part. So, we split it up into two parts to simplify it, especially as this is a little bit more complex, with the fact that we're closing down the roadway, and we're making professional estimations on where cars are gonna then redistribute through the roadway network. And so that was my goal, and what I proposed to the agencies, and the Texas Department and the city agreed to go through that methodology. And so the part 1 portion was submitted, and I got my blessings from Texas Department on that, and now we're moving forward with the actual operational analysis to understand how are the intersections going to perform, and what, if any mitigation measures are gonna be needed.
Okay, so, that's kinda, I think, what her point would be, which is, we're sitting here, we're gonna close the street before we know whether we've got the ability to mitigate those features, is that not what you just said?
We know, we know what we're planning on doing, we've had conversations with city staff, and I think they might be able to elaborate a little bit more on their position on what was presented to them, but we feel confident in the solutions that we've, preliminary solutions that we've provided them for how it's gonna be mitigated.
All right. Do we have other speakers?
I don't have any other speaker forms.
Okay, all right. If that's the case, then we are ready to come to a vote? Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I happened to be at the P&amp;Z meeting last, whenever it was last, and the HEB rep was there, and I know, we looked at the site plan, and I started considering what you were suggesting regarding moving to the east side. And according to her research, two-year research, it won't work to put a bigger building on the site if you don't have that street and part of that real estate to work with. And there's no point to doing a new building if you're not going to increase it and improve it, and do the bells and whistles that we've all been waiting for. So, I think, you know, you make a good point, but I think the real estate just isn't, it's not situated to have that building.
More available if you have any questions directly.
Representative that spoke, Kathy, Kathy Stripl, I think.
Kathy, would you speak, please?
And the other thing I wanted to say, which is somewhat separate, I would like to see if we could somehow protect those heritage oaks or the legacy oaks wherever the gentleman is. So I just wanna make a point in a minute, maybe there's some way we could just, HEB can consider that when you're building this new project.
Two points, sorry.
I'm Kathy Strimple with HEB 646 South Main, South floors.
You speak a little louder.
Yes, I will, better.
Okay.
Kathy Strimple with HEB 646 South floors. Let me address the first question, which was the orientation of the store. You're correct, where we are wanting to make an investment in the community to build a bigger, a bigger box that will hold all of our new innovations that we've not been able to bring to the community in Kerrville. And to do that, it doesn't physically fit on the property facing the other direction. We have looked at it for years, trying to work within the property that we had access to. Physically, it's not feasible to make it work facing the other direction. With regard to the tree preservation question, we are trying to save the trees that are along Jefferson. The orientation and the location of the store sitting to the right of the existing store on the property that we've just requested zoning, the new store will cross over into the proposed abandonment of the Hayes Street, will be kind of the front of the new store. So there are some trees that are within the building footprint that are infeasible to save. The ones around the perimeter, we are looking to try to save some of those larger ones. Did I miss anything?
Okay. Anything to add?
No, Benjamin Scott with HEB also, we're just available for any comments and questions. We understand the sensitivity about the road closure, and we have, as Kathy said, and everyone else, made every effort to figure it out, but at the end of the day, we couldn't fit a larger store in the existing. And what we think is, this impact is, yes, it is a street closure, but compared to some of the options we looked at through the years, this is less impactful to the neighborhood of taking out multiple residential lots to create the ability to keep a store at this location. So without the street closure of Hayes, we've left with options of either encroaching further into the neighborhood or moving the store further out of town. So we were hoping this, and staff has worked very closely with us on what we think is a good solution for everyone. And we're very excited about the possibility of keeping the store at its current location.
Thank you, thank you. Questions from the council, starting with place one?
Brew, what utilities do we have in the ground, and what's gonna happen with drainage when we close that, or if we close that street?
There's a, excuse me, there's a water stub that actually feeds HEB, that'll be relocated with new construction. As far as drainage, that, my knowledge of that study has not been concluded, but it will be accounted for.
Is there any underground stormwater drainage there, or is it all on the road?
It's all surface.
Yeah, I'll comment on that real quickly, that the, there is underground stormwater drainage that is at the intersection of 27 and Hayes. And there, as you know, there are some regional drainage issues on Hayes Street, and so the solution that has been provided by HEB actually provides for the rerouting of that drainage and helping the city and the community solve that regional drainage issue, and getting that both around their facility, better access from Jefferson to 27. So it helps us in that front.
Only water, there's no sewer?
Correct.
And also, this is just, I guess, I'm just curious about it. Who owns the street? Because I kinda asked Hayes about this earlier. If the property abutting, they're joining the road, they're paying taxes on what's deeded to them, but we don't own the street, so is no one paying taxes on the street?
That's correct.
How does that happen? So they owned the center of the road? Okay, so we're just abandoning a right-of-way, we're not conveying any land?
That's correct.
All right, place two?
Yeah, my question's kind of, this bond kinda stole what I was asking. But basically, my concern is really, I think everybody agrees, you know, HEB's a great company and great community service, iconic and all that, so I don't want this to be perceived as something against the project, but the, my concern is really about, is about the traffic flow. Hayes, as she described, Hayes is actually a very main north-south road that we use. We have the light, not just at Main, but we got the light at Shriner. And when we talked about the danger zones that we have along Shriner Street, one of them was Clay, Clay and Shriner, and another one is Francisco Lemos and Shriner, which both will now get more use at them. And because nobody's gonna cut from Main Street through now, we're gonna go to Francisco Lemos. And if you ever tried to make that left at Francisco Lemos, it's, that's gonna need a light. I mean, that's what we're talking about. So, when we're talking about this closure, and this particular ordinance is talking about a cost, I would like to see us view the cost to the city of giving up this road involve those mitigating factors that we are going to need, because we're still gonna have to deal with Clay, we'd already talked about it before, using something, a light, a traffic circle. One option was actually forcing people, instead of being able to make a left on Clay, you were gonna have to go down to Quinlan or Hayes. So now that option's gone, so you see what I'm saying? I think we should be maybe valuing this giving up the right-of-way a little bit more, is all. Has anybody looked at that, what's gonna occur in the overflow?
As far as the additional cost of a new light?
Well, no, I mean, he talked about, I forget where we went, but he was talking about the traffic studies. I would assume that mitigating the traffic flow that's now gonna sit at those two points would come out of that study, and I'm guessing there's gonna be a cost to somebody at that point.
Okay, HEB is compensating us for the street, correct?
For the right-of-way, yes.
And then there is, as the city does the drainage work that's required, that will also be factored in? Okay.
They'll be doing the drainage as part of their project, and that's why they're getting credit for it upfront.
Okay, so they're getting credit for doing the drainage necessary, and they're gonna compensate the city for the street? Okay.
My question is, if you were to take a visual of this, because of where the gas station will be located, it's gonna look a lot like the HEB in Burney, would that be a correct assessment? No?
I'm thinking in my head, honestly. The store orientation and the fuel station are a little bit different in Burney. The fuel station sits more along the side.
Along the side of the street, okay.
This would be at the very end of the parking lot, which is a lot more traditionally like how we like to do it, because it helps separate the circulation around people that are just doing fuel and people that are shopping. One of the other aspects that we like about this layout is wanting to get a clean parking field compared to what you all are dealing with today, where it's all in front of the store, traffic's a little more continuous. And we are also working on putting a dedicated traffic signal for that entrance to the store, to help with those safety concerns as well. So, we do believe in the long run that this will be a lot safer, more convenient parking lot, with a lot more options for people, be it in and out safely, be it to the light at Lemos, or the new traffic signal here, and multiple options to be a safer parking lot in the long run.
About how many additional parking spaces will this produce?
It's significant, we're getting to kind of, based on store square footage, we're trying to target kind of the one parking spot per 175 square feet of the store. I think right now, we're nowhere close to that with what we do. And I would say we're really underparked in the way that a lot is along the side of the store, there's a lot across Hayes Street today that is segregated. This is the one uniform, safe parking lot, where folks don't kind of have to migrate all over. I think there's a lot of cross-traffic between cars going different ways, carts going different ways today, that will be a lot better in the new situation.
Good, that's good to hear.
I'm sorry, I just gotta answer it quick, 200 more parking spaces in the new area. So a significant increase.
Yes.
This may not be the right time to ask, but I'm curious about the gas pumps. The site plan looks like there's not a lot of room on the west side. I don't know how much room there is, but, so, will the traffic flow only one way? Or will there be, you know, a direction, a guiding map of some sort? Arrows, blinking lights, do not enter, whatever.
I understand your question. Let me say a couple of things. If you compare what we're proposing to what you're seeing out at Burney, it's in a different location on the site, it's further away from the front door, which is something that we do strive to do. But it also has circulation just around the fuel station. So, they're laid out, it's roughly about 30-foot, there's a 30-foot drive on all four sides of the fuel station, plus or minus, which is enough for two-way traffic that circulates around the fuel station, not getting into the main driveway that's going north and south.
I see that one driveway now.
So as opposed to what you, what we have out there today, to get to the fuel station, and our fuel station and our parking lot traffic are using the same dry aisles. So here, we've been able to move it, it's got its own space, and you can get in and out a lot safer, and you can still navigate around the parking lot and do your shop without getting mixed up in the fuel station traffic.
And are y'all going to block that alley off? Since it can't be widened, and the alley that goes to Francisco Lemos, or will that have, will that be in access?
It is a public alley, so it's not. We are working with city staff to figure out what to do with it. We would like to make some improvements to it, so that it is safer to use, because we're not closing it, so it is there. So we're still working with staff to figure out what we can do with that alley. It is 15 or 16 feet wide, so it's not wide enough for two-way traffic, but we are looking at some options.
I use it. Just saying. Thank you.
If there are not other questions from council, do I hear a motion on this item?
I would like to move that we approve ordinance number 2019-03, abandoning and vacating and closing two public rights-of-way consisting of Hayes and Main Street.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
May I ask a question, sir? Real quick?
Have you signed up to speak to this item?
I signed up, but I didn't put down this one here. But I didn't break, put it down.
Okay. Sign up. No, wait, wait. Sign up and then speak.
I did. I put my name...
Is it, is it for this item?
No, for visitors, and then we moved it over towards the...
Appointments.
Let him speak and he'll sign up later.
All right.
What's that?
Go ahead and speak and just make sure you turn one in.
My question is, just really curious. I see the trend of shopping, and I don't see that we need these huge stores anymore. I've noticed, and it's funny, I told my wife like 10 years ago, that I have a feeling that these box, huge box stores are getting smaller. And I started seeing in San Antonio, they have the small Walmarts everywhere in these small communities. And I'm really curious if you guys have studied where your shopping actually go? Because I actually see this huge store here, and probably 10 years from now, everything's being shipped. And what do you mean the parking space? Am I considered that?
I think that hurts.
Yeah. I'm curious if y'all looked into that. That's, that's my question.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Would you like me to address that or?
Just show us where on the site plan where the pickup is going to be.
No, it will be right, right up, the plan is right now on the front.
Oh, okay.
For curbside pickup, and that is part that's integrated into the store.
Okay.
We're definitely embracing that as a future trend there. But we don't see that store size going away. Walmart opened a bunch of smaller stores in San Antonio, and they just closed four within the last year, three or four stores. So I think small is telling you that's not for everybody, convenience size. We want to have a full and robust shop that's complemented by this curbside pickup or delivery to your house. And that in the store, you also have great opportunities to have culinary experiences, cooking demos, prepared food, prepared meals in the store and those opportunities. We think this store, maybe a few years ago, I would have, we would have been shooting for maybe 150,000 square feet, 150 with curbside services. We think it's a very valid software.
Okay. Will you still feature 1905 HEB vanilla ice cream?
Yes, I can guarantee that, yes, sir.
Okay.
In the new package, Joseph.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
We have a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion, a second. All in favor of this ordinance, 6B? Let it be known by the raised hand. And it is unanimous. Okay? And Gavin, another public hearing, and it is 7:20. And this is 6C. If you'll read it in, Ms. Brown.
Ordinance number 2019-01, creating a planned development district for professional office, retail trade one, and warehousing and distribution uses on an approximately 4.27 acre tract of land out of the Patrick Fleming survey number 666, abstract 145, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, more commonly known as 318 Leslie Drive, adopting a concept plan and conditions related to the development of said district, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, establishing a penalty or fine not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof, ordering publication and providing other matters related to the subject.
Okay. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Brown mentioned this is planned development district for 318 Leslie Drive for professional office, retail trade, warehousing, distribution. The request is not currently consistent with the comprehensive plan. However, Kerrville 2050 plan did not look at this specific neighborhood as it lays outside of one of the catalyst areas. The Kerrville 2050 plan focused on those catalyst areas for redevelopment and future development and adopted the 2008 or 2002 future land use plan as was in place currently or previously. The current zoning of Gateway is also not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan actually recommended neighborhood residential for this area. Current area consists of a variety of uses, including a handful of single-family homes, multiple construction contractors' offices and yards, subject service company, mini warehouses, and a taxi and limousine service. So clearly, the area does not fit the neighborhood residential that the comprehensive plan laid out. Like I said, this area was not specifically studied from those previous plans or the Kerrville 2050 plan. One of the things the Kerrville 2050 plan does talk about is that infill development and reinvestment into the community, which this project would qualify. Leslie Drive is designed as a collector's street to connect Loop 534 adjacent to the interstate down to Sidney Baker. And there is some truck traffic anticipated with the warehouse and distribution on this property. Planning and zoning commission recommended it for your approval, and I'd be pleased to answer your questions.
Question. I, I drove over there, sorry.
We need to ask, yeah, in the public hearing, we need to ask if there are speakers?
I don't have any speaker request forms for this item.
Okay. All right. Okay. Then go out of the public hearing at 7:23, and questions of the council?
Several of the roads said you're now in the county as I was driving around there. Is it, is it, is there a part, is there a part of that area that isn't in the city? Is that correct?
Yes. As you move to the north and west, you do leave the city limits.
That's correct.
We kind of really border right on that.
Right.
Even if we had a catalyst area, it'd be right on the edge. It's interesting.
I looked at it today, and there's a lot of clear land right there, and then there are a few houses. I understand there was very little objection at the P and Z from the neighbors of the area?
That's correct.
It looks like a nice project for that area. For those of you that don't know where it is, if you're going out Sidney Baker toward Fredericksburg, and the salt group is on your right, the Valero's on your left, you go up Leslie Drive and up there on the right.
Close to interstate and...
Yeah, close, close to where you can connect to the interstate.
Correct.
Drew, were there any objections from neighbors?
There was some discussion of a possible phase of multifamily. There was some objection to that, so the applicant did not pursue that request. If they decide to change that, since it would not be consistent with this concept plan, they'd have to go back through the planning commission and city council. But that was the only objection at that point.
There was some objection, questions about truck use and traffic and lighting.
That's right. There was discussion of lighting, the truck traffic. There was discussion of traffic on Easy Street, but that would be minimal compared to what the traffic would be on Leslie, which is a collector's street.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I...
You got some? Yeah, just one thing. On the landscaping regulations, are we regulating what they can plan or are we recommending plans that they can plan? Where, where do you find those? It'd be on page two of the ordinance at the very bottom.
Just a recommendation of what they plan as far as their screening.
Okay. So that's not, they can plan whatever they want?
Yes.
Okay.
Drew? Yeah, I got a couple of questions that kind of have to do with the staff recommendation. So first off, we went to PDD or Plan Development, which we're supposed to be minimizing those uses rather than adding them in. So that's one question. But, but the other was, it's, so you, it's not in compliance with the Kerrville 2050. It's apparently not a land use that's approved by the gateway, which is the current zoning. So the current zoning, the future land use, not in compliance. And at P and Z, staff recommendation was denial. So how did we change to get it a recommendation of approval today?
Staff recommendation was based solely on the policies within the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. Through the discussion with the planning commission, discussed how the current area, the current zoning, and the lack of review of the specific area is also not consistent. The only consistent land use in the area would be the single-family homes, which is the minority of that area. So staff, although recommending against it based on written policy through the actual land uses, existing land uses in the surrounding area, support the request.
But if we had a couple of different land use decisions made in the past 10, 15 years, and they chose to change from what's currently there, why would we then go back to, I mean, it's almost, I don't know, what's the point of a plan if we don't, you know, execute it? What, what's the, why do we have a gateway district if we're just, you know, why do we have a comprehensive plan if we're just going to say, well, it's not in compliance? Eh, whatever.
As far as the gateway zoning, I wasn't here at that time.
No, but either, either one of those, we're basically discarding both of them, both current zoning and future land use projections. We're discarding both of those to, to approve a PD, which we're also trying to get away from. So I, I don't understand the, the policy choice of the recommendation, I guess, is really what it gets down to.
The purpose of the PD is the fact that this location would be specific to the north districts, which does not allow this use. And we, comprehensive plan recommended a rewrite of the zoning code, which has not been completed. So the zoning code as it currently sits is not in compliance directly with the comprehensive plan. And so to not hold up this project that's ready to start construction, recommended a PD in, in that case.
You understand my point though, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're, we're making exceptions for an exception. Okay. Just so we're all clear what we're doing.
All right. That's all.
What type of warehouse? Do we have any idea? And I know that's, that's a broad question.
I'll let the applicant explain that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. In reference to your question, it's a food grade. It's for local stores. When everybody says warehouse, you think this huge thing. It's a very small location that is going to have food-grade products that are delivered to the stripes and to actually even some of the HEB as well. So those products are, they come in once a week, and then they, that's what they distribute to the different stripe stores throughout the week. So the, the traffic really is very minimal in reference to the trucks, except it's once a week the truck comes in. And then at that point, local distributor trucks, the, the small ones, residents that live in the area that work currently right now, actually go and distribute that product.
And you may have explained, how big are the offices?
The offices, I believe it's about 800 square feet or 1,000 square feet that is there. And then you have the storage area. And again, it's food grade, so it's not, it is pegged to food. So cleanliness is very important, so you're not going to have, it's not for automotive or anything else. It is food grade.
And the offices would be open to the community for rental?
Yes. The offices, we, we developed this into two phases, as Drew has mentioned, and what we have seen in other communities is that the office space for small office, general contractors, accountants, people that need an office, they're at home or they're, they're in that transition where they don't need 4,000 square feet of office space, but they would need anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 square feet to maybe a receptionist and two small areas inside. That's what we have seen has worked out in other communities very well. And so it would, it would be for small businesses that would be placed in there.
And you've done this in other communities?
Yes, we have done this. Again, the, the food grade part is something that we have done. And the small offices, what we have seen is that we study each market, that we go and see what is, what is the need, what is that? Every market is different. And one of the things in our research that we found, this project has taken over a year to take off. So it is something that finally it got in, in place. And based on our studies and our information, that is something that the city of Kerrville does need and we saw a request for.
I didn't realize he was going to be here. So can I ask this real quickly?
Yes, sir.
What's, what's your timeline on your phase two that you discussed at P and Z?
Right now, the, as I have mentioned to planning and zoning, the, the first part is phase one, and we have to capitalize on the investment of people that are over here to try to jump into phase two as soon as phase one is finished. Phase one should probably take six months to probably complete. So once phase one is completed, then we would continue into phase two. And one of the things, I think somebody mentioned about hedging and plants, it isn't, we are following, the, the city has mentioned in reference to the hedging that has to be done around the property. We're also dedicating the additional right of way required for the, the street on Easy Street where the right of way wasn't, there was asphalt on private property. And so we're going to be not only putting that, but putting sidewalks in that whole generary.
Phase two was contemplating that housing thing, right?
Yes, at this point, that's not something that...
I know, you're just thinking about it. I, I know.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from council? If not, all, do you hear a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance number 2019-01 as presented.
Okay. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of this matter, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand. And it is unanimous by vote.
I'd just like to say one final thought. I'd really like us to start getting away from the PDs as we've stated that was our goal.
Okay. We move into or out of the public hearing. And item number 7A, Ms. Brown, if you'll read that for us.
Project funding agreement between the city of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation, the city of Kerrville, Texas, and Shriner University for the development and construction of an extension to the city's River Trail to connect with Shriner University's campus.
Ms. Hoppe?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Pleased to bring you an item that we've discussed a couple times in EIC. Ultimately, that project funding agreement was approved at their December meeting. Pulling up a PowerPoint here that I'll go through with you briefly. Just a brief summary on what is before us tonight. We do have a funding request for approximately one-plus-mile spur off of the now completed five miles of River Trail. That will go from G Street down the right of way along 27, cross under the bridge, just past the cemetery area and, which is on Shriner University property at that point, wraparound part of Quinlan Creek, cross the bridge area onto their main campus where they are proposing a trailhead at that location. The amenity was proposed by Shriner University really as a, again, an amenity not only for the community, but an amenity for them in their efforts to help grow their campus enrollment and better market the university, which is a catalyzing factor for our, our local economy. It was identified as an action item in the Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan, and it also helps connect the adjacent neighborhoods and area businesses and really provide the trailhead in an area of the community where we don't have a trailhead right now. The request from the EIC was for 1.5 million. And again, this is a three-way agreement between the EIC as a funding mechanism, Shriner University as a landowner and as a large portion of the trail location, and then, of course, the city ultimately as the one who will work through the design engineering efforts as well as supervising the construction efforts. Again, this was an item that was identified within your Kerrville 2050 comprehensive plan within the key priority area of parks, open space, and river corridor. A couple of different guiding principles here, focusing on enhancing, investing, investing in existing assets that we have, and then also focusing on connecting businesses and neighborhoods and major destinations to the river corridor. There was a specific action item, P 6.3, which was creating a pedestrian bike connector from Shriner Vers, from Shriner University to the River Trail. Again, this is the River Trail map showing the existing five miles of the backbone of the trail, if you will, to what is now connected at the far western terminus at the Dieter Center, all the way along going through Louise Hayes Park, and then on to the existing terminus on the east end or southeast end located at or nearby Kerrville-Shriner Park. This was an item that you all took up several months ago, as well as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, essentially looked at various expansion efforts that had been proposed. Essentially, the yellow areas, the existing trail, the areas in red are the elements of your master plan that were approved conceptually, basically having a... basically having, uh, at some point in the future, uh, growing a loop around, uh, Nimitz Lake and connecting to, uh, the existing parts of the trail in that area, again, the, to the Dieter Center, uh, uh, trailhead that we just discussed, uh, and then also a, a similar loop, uh, towards the bottom, uh, and this would be, uh, a part of that, uh, and then some other spur elements, and one of those spurs was labeled as one, and these aren't in any, uh, priority order by any means, but, uh, that spur one to Shriners University was identified within your master plan that was approved. This is a conceptual drawing, uh, that was developed, uh, essentially, uh, up at the top left corner, uh, you'll see that's the G Street connection, uh, the proposed trail is the area that's in the dotted red, uh, that will go along the, uh, several properties there, uh, between G Street, uh, and the right-of-way located, uh, along, uh, Highway twenty-seven, again, crossing under the bridge there at twenty-seven, sort of wrapping around the cemetery area along, uh, really a beautiful stretch of Quinlan Creek, uh, crossing the creek, uh, and then, uh, crossing a field area, uh, that goes over to the existing pavilion, uh, where the trailhead and parking location is proposed, uh, at Shriners University. You also see in the blue area, uh, that is a proposed, uh, crushed granite trail, uh, that, uh, Shriners University will be, uh, installing, uh, here in the near term, uh, and that element not only provides additional asset, uh, for, uh, trail users, but, uh, you know, also, uh, Shriners University, uh, attendees as well, uh, but also the neighborhood in general, and it really speaks to an effort and, and, and this entirety of this effort, uh, in Shriners really desiring to ha- have the community embrace the university and be able to utilize the university, uh, and so that's the way this, this deal has been crafted. So, just a brief agreement summary, essentially, uh, what this funding agreement provides for is that the EIC will be the funding mechanism to provide one point five million for the trail extension, two equal installments, one in this fiscal year, one in the next fiscal year. Again, the city will, will be the, the entity primarily designed, uh, responsible for the design and engineering of the project, acquiring the necessary easements, and then ultimately, uh, facilitating a construction contract. Uh, Shriners University is committed to, uh, providing the necessary recreation easements for the construction of the river trail extension, uh, being that the vast majority of it is on their property, uh, providing for easements for the parking at the trailhead, uh, constructing, again, that perimeter campus trail, uh, with public access that we talked about, uh, providing fifty thousand in direct funding support towards the effort, uh, and then providing three hundred and sixty-five day public access, both pedestrian and vehicular to that trailhead, uh, from, generally, uh, from that Park Street, uh, Trap Street intersection and campus entrance. Uh, constructing publicly accessible restrooms near the trailhead, uh, within two years of the, uh, of the completion, uh, and then maintaining, uh, you know, faculty employment levels, uh, at least to the current levels that they have right now, and that's really speaks to that, uh, the jobs component. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Um, Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Hoppe?
I got a couple of questions, Mayor. Uh, how many properties is it crossing? It's different properties, property owners.
Let me go back here on the map right here. Um, so, uh, there's six properties, uh, in total. Nope, can't see it there. There's six properties in total, uh, most of those properties, uh, the smaller properties are located closer to G Street, uh, the vast majority, uh, I'd say, uh, eighty percent, uh, of the trail extension is located on Shriners University property.
Do they own across twenty-seven right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes sense. Any of that developable, or is it just all on the floodplain, you know?
On the floodplain, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's beautiful, but really undevelopable.
Head Mayor, Teggy?
Okay. Mr. Rudy?
Yeah, I got a couple, where's the, on the map, which, um, the design of the project it shows some ten-foot, some eight-foot, some six-foot, where, where are those sections?
So, the, uh, the vast majority of the area, uh, what I'll say, south of twenty-seven, uh, is the ten-foot, and that will have the tow-down elements to it. Uh, there are, uh, components, um, north, what would be north or west of twenty-seven going to the area, some of those areas, uh, will not need the full-blown trail segments that are much more expensive to produce, uh, and so, uh, that will be some of the eight-foot more, uh, they'll, they'll, the user won't know it, uh, but they will be, uh, you know, essentially, uh, constructed like a sidewalk.
Okay. Um, and then, the other question I had is kind of a, let's see, so this is a three-part thing, EIC is essentially giving a million and a half to the city to build their part, so, um, and the fifty thousand that Shriners giving, are, are they giving it to the city towards building it, or who are they giving the fifty thousand to?
That's correct.
Okay, so, if, in the funding agreement, it's got, I guess you'd call it a clawback, where if Shriners doesn't do their part, whatever that is, um, they give money to EIC. Why, why would it go to EIC if the cities, EIC gives their money to the cities, so why, why would it go that direction?
So, you're right, in that, the EIC is giving money to the city, but it's for the project, and it, you know, for whatever reason, we got great bids, and hopefully we do, and it only came in at one point two million, and we only spent one point two million, that would go back to the EIC.
Yeah, I get that, but the, the project itself will be owned by the city, right? EIC's funding it, so if there's some Shriners problem in the, in the delivery of it, 'cause I guess they're given a couple of years to do the bathroom or something, it seems like that should go to the city since they're the owner at that point, but that's, um, a logistic thing. And then, the, the last one is more of a curiosity thing. So, last month, we, EIC gave money to the developer to build infrastructure, and this, this time, EIC is giving money to the city to develop the infrastructure. Both cases, it's public infrastructure, why, why do we choose, why didn't we choose the city as the developer of the, the other one? Is it, is there a reason?
Yeah, essentially, you know, you've got, in that, in that case, uh, you had, that was, uh, very much, uh, a developer-driven project, uh, that, um, you know, they were, uh, we contend they will be able to do it cheaper, uh, you know, at this point, there are not property owners on this that, uh, can, you know, do this project, complete this project, uh, that had the experience of, of building river trails, um, you know, and, and, and desire to go out there and assemble these properties and, and get these easements and do that. So, it's just a little bit, uh, you know, different demand, uh, for, for product and ability to, to make that product happen.
All right.
Good. Ms. Agnew?
Uh, just, uh, you may have mentioned it, time period for all of this?
So, our hope is to, uh, we're, we're gonna be, uh, assuming your approval tonight, we'll be working on a design-engineering effort that we'll be anticipating bringing to you probably in the next, uh, four to six weeks. Uh, you know, we would, uh, I would think, uh, design should not take, uh, a tremendous amount of time, uh, our hope is to let a construction project, uh, late summer, early fall, uh, and, you know, have this project, you know, complete in, uh, you know, early twenty-twenty timeframe.
No, it's exciting, it's just truly exciting.
All right.
Uh, well, I've been involved for weeks with EIC, being on the EIC board, so I, we have, we've answered a lot of questions regarding safety features on the trail that go under the bridge, and, and I was very satisfied with the, the answers I got regarding lighting and clear pass, patches ways and access, and so, and signage, you know, when it comes to pointing where the restrooms would be, and so, I'm, I'm very satisfied with how the design will probably end up, and we'll get to use the trail to go to breakfast at the Shriners, uh, cafeteria, and walk it off on the back.
Yeah, we've, we've learned a few things as we've gone along the way, and certainly as we, uh, developed the last five miles, and we're very excited about this extension as well.
I enjoy the river trail very much, and, uh, just one item related to this, the area around the cemetery is really beautiful. I have a grandson buried on the north side of the cemetery, and so, I've, I've seen that, that area, it's just, it really is nice.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion in regard to this item?
I would love to make a motion.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I ask for speakers?
I don't.
We don't have any?
I don't have any.
Okay, all right. Uh, all right.
All right. I would like to move that we approve the project funding agreement between the city of Kerrville, uh, Shriners University, and, uh, the EIC for the construction of an extension of the city's river trail to connect Shriners University campus.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Um, all in favor of that item, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand, okay? And it is passed unanimously. Okay, seven B, Ms. Brown, if you would read that for us?
We did seven D.
B.
E, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. Authorized execution of a construction contract for the Legion Lift Station with Keystone Construction in the amount of five million, four hundred ninety-three thousand and six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay, Ms. Hoppe?
Yes, sir. Um, before you tonight, uh, we have an item that was, uh, identified both in your wastewater, uh, master planning effort in twenty twelve, uh, as well as the Kerrville twenty fifty comprehensive, uh, plan. Uh, we are pleased, uh, and we've, we've spoken with this item, uh, with you a number of times, uh, particularly related to Texas Water Development Board funding, uh, as well as, uh, EIC funding, we're very pleased to, uh, bring, uh, quality bids, uh, to you tonight, uh, and a, uh, proposed, uh, low bid of, uh, five million, four hundred ninety-three, uh, six sixty-three to Keystone. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but the project hasn't changed at all from when we presented to you before, so.
Uh, given, given what we were looking at in terms of cost, and this cost, you, you said a quality bidder, you, everything checks out?
Yes, uh, we have, uh, uh, checked out references, uh, of other projects, and, uh, we believe Keystone to be a, a quality contractor that we look forward to do business, doing business with.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna start over here, Ms. Segerman, any question?
Well, I guess, this is probably not directly related to this request, but I was just, the, the additional money that we're going to have, I guess we're working on some options, some other projects that we might need it on, is it?
Yes, as you recall, uh, as we were going through the design effort, we were seeing rising escalation costs that we were very concerned about.
Right.
And so, uh, when we, uh, went forward with the application for the Texas Water Development Board funding, we asked for eight million to, uh, fully prepare ourselves for, uh, bids that may be much higher than what we ended up getting. Um, it, you know, and so, with the, with the bids, essentially, uh, where we're at, uh, when you, uh, look at, uh, the, the bid element that came through, potential contingency, uh, the design-engineering costs which are reimbursable, as well as, uh, some of the grant administrative elements, um, we are anticipating right now, we wanna get through the construction project, but right now, we're anticipating, uh, somewhere around two-point-two, two-point-two-five, uh, million, and so, uh, one of the things that we have the ability to do is go to, back to the Water Development Board and to say, we like to reapply those funds to a, a, an alternative wastewater project, uh, within the applicability of what, uh, they allow for, uh, and so, we are in the process of assessing that right now, but we absolutely have needs within the twenty twelve, uh, master plan that, uh, we'd, we'd like to bring back forward to you, uh, once we're a little further along, uh, in, in this project.
Good, look forward to it.
Ms. Agnew?
I have no questions.
Mr. Rudy?
Yeah, so, kind of along the lines of what you just described, you, you mentioned two-point-two or something like that, so what we really have is for this project, ten million dollars has been funded for it, or...
Yes, sir.
Guaranteed funding, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And it's looking like we're only gonna need six-point-three, something like that?
So, a- again, remember that there's design-engineering costs, so it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand...
Right, that's added to...
...in there that are reimbursable, uh, from that, as well as, uh, some of the, the grant costs, and I believe those are under a hundred thousand.
Right, so, so we're looking at three-quarters of a million added to five-point-four, or five-point-five, so we're looking at six-point-three, so we're looking at...
With contingency as well, we're playing with roughly twenty-five percent contingency.
Right, we're looking at over three million dollars, maybe three and a half, that's extra, and we've gone through the trouble recently of raising the water rates based on the need to do this, even though, we, I think we all realize that it's really based on a different need, but whatever, it's primarily we focused on this. I understand that we have other projects, I get that. Um, we also have other projects that we have long-term investment budgeted for. Um, this is not money we expected to use for those, this is money that we had been told when, at EIC, we would reduce the amount.
Right.
And so, it seems to me, I mean, we're not voting on this particular aspect tonight, but I'd really like us to look hard at how we're gonna tell people that we just raise their rates so that we could borrow more than we needed. Um, so, I'd like us to look really hard at that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can comment on that?
Yeah.
As explained during our budget work sessions, the re, the primary reason for the increase on the rates was operational. Yes, we had some increase in debt service, but when you look at the last time that we increased our water rates was in twenty twelve, and our expenses in, in operations have grown significantly without a rate increase, that was the primary driver, and without a doubt, we did have increase in debt, but to say alone it was related to this project, that's just not accurate.
It's not what I said, so, we don't have to go into that discussion, um, it wasn't the intent, but we raised rates, and we, we, the rates that we raised over the next twenty years did not match the operational adjustments that we're gonna be making, and part of the reason we were raising the rates was to keep our debt cap at a certain level. Yes, it's due to a lot of factors, but bottom line is, this is, this is gonna turn out to be threesome, three-plus million dollars that is possibly usable later, possibly not, but I, we need to be able to answer to the people why we're borrowing more than we need.
And I'm, I'm sure we will do that when we cross that bridge of how we determine...
Crossing it today.
No, we're not crossing it today.
Yeah.
When we, when we determine, uh, how we're gonna handle that and what's gonna be done, uh, it is a great rate, and, uh, so, so we'll come back and look at that issue of how we use, uh, what remains. Okay. Anything?
Nah, I just add to comment that, I'm glad we're finally doing this project, I feel it should've been done a long time ago, moving in the right direction.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, we got someone that wants to speak.
I'm sorry, got someone to speak? Okay, Mr. Cooper?
Thank you. I just have Gary Cooper, one twenty-four, Aaron Drive, I have a question, uh, to Mr. Hoppe or Mr. McDaniel, whoever'd like to address it. EIC, um, you brought up that we put two million dollars toward this, and, uh, I was just wondering if they're not, if that's not being used, uh, is there gonna be some recoupment of that back to EIC? Uh, 'cause we made a, we put in up to two million, depending on how much we borrowed from the state, and it looks like we're not doing that, or, and it was all attributable to the Legion Lift Station, so, I don't think that that money, that two-million-dollar commitment can go to other projects, because that's not what we voted for, so I just wanted to address that issue.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm gonna ask the city manager to address this, and then we're gonna move on, because that, that's a, another issue for another time.
The EIC money is the first money in and the first money out, and so, that money will be spent before we use the Texas Water Development Board funds, so, any balance that's due, either the council will decide to return that money to the Water Development Board or never really call it, or they'll, um, ask for it to be used for another project.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so, if it's not used for the Legion Lift Station, Mark, then you're gonna ask EIC to use it for something else?
No, it's going to be used for the Legion Lift Station.
EIC money is the first dollar spent, first two million is going from EIC, that's what's going on.
That's all I was trying to find out, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we authorize execution of a construction contract with Keystone Construction.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion, a second. Uh, all in favor of this seven B item for the construction of Legion Lift Station, uh, let it be known by the raised hand, okay? And it is unanimous. Okay, seven C, Ms. Brown, if you'll read that for us?
Authorized execution of a professional services agreement with LNV Engineering to develop the drainage master plan in the amount of two hundred and four thousand and three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay. All right, Ms. Hoppe again.
Yes, sir, uh, we are pleased to bring you another Kerrville twenty, uh, fifty comprehensive planning item, uh, to check off the list tonight. Uh, one of the, uh, elements that was identified within your, uh, key priority area of water, uh, and wastewater and drainage, uh, and the guiding principle of developing and maintaining a long-range plan for stormwater drainage management, addressing and prioritizing infrastructure needs, and identifying funding sources. Essentially, the city has, uh, never had, uh, a drainage, comprehensive, uh, drainage master plan, and so, uh, that is what we have, uh, looked at developing, uh, for you, and so, we have sought some outside assistance with an engineering firm, uh, LNV, which we have experience with, with some other projects. As you recall, uh, they have facilitated, uh, our solid waste permitting effort, uh, with TCAQ, uh, related to the landfill, uh, and done some other auxiliary work, uh, so we feel very confident they've done, uh, this drainage work in other communities, we feel very confident moving forward. Uh, essentially, it will be creating, uh, uh, looking at, uh, a basin-wide, uh, element, or basin-by-basin, uh, drainage, uh, analysis, uh, of those stormwater, uh, storms, uh, as they come in, how that stormwater, uh, reacts, how it flows, um, uh, we've talked about a number of issues, uh, in the community, uh, with our drainage... We've talked about a number of issues in the community with our drainage flowing primarily through our streets, which has a number of impacts to our street pavement and wear surfaces. And so, this will look at all of those mechanisms, as well as some identified problem areas that we repeatedly hear about over the years. And so, it will be looking at both the global scope, as well as some specific elements. I won't have the full-blown engineering design fix on each one of those, but it will get us much, much closer towards that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I've talked to Mr. Barron about this, man, I hope somebody looks at the six-hundred block of Harper Street. Off that hill, is that, and it just stays there for days.
Sure.
And anyway, okay. Counsel, questions in regard to this that matter?
I just have a curiosity question. Have you identified neighborhood areas, some?
There has certainly been some elements, you know, we'll be looking to, you know, this, this effort will help us more fully catalog those, as well as model those. You know, you can, you can have rain at one end of town and not on the other, and, and, you know, it, so it, it always depends on the storm, depends on the severity of the storm, depends on the severity of the storm in the basin, the timing of those basins. This is gonna help us all with, with those efforts.
Okay, anyone else on council?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple, but one is actually what you mentioned. So, back when we first brought this up at a workshop, you threw out some hotspot areas, and we added, or we threw a couple more out. One of them was what he just described, was the, between Culberson and Lewis on Harper. It, like you said, it sits there for days, it's up over the water on a high rain, doesn't even have to be a storm, it's just something. And so, I, I, and I see that we added Jack Street or something from prior it got added. It would be nice if we considered looking at this other hotspot, and if it's a matter of money for them to look at it, I would say, I'd prioritize that over looking for a recreational kayak as far as a choice, because that's, if I'm understanding it, that's a, that's a chunk of change in this thing, and I, I'd really like to answer that drainage problem there. I mean, that's a sort of a question for council, but, and then, in general, I think master plans are great. We're writing them all the time, that's great. But I'm hoping that, again, this is a master plan that we're gonna actually execute, as opposed to, again, recently with the wastewater master plan, we called it conceptual, or the comp plan just a little bit ago when we decided it's not in compliance, but for whatever reason, we're bypassed. I would expect that this is, I mean, we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars on some master plan, I'm hoping it's a little more than conceptual.
Well, let me clarify out, I just wanted to emphasize that we will not have construction documents generated out of these, for these specific projects. They will be at a conceptual level that certainly can evolve as we launch up on specific engineering efforts for each one of the solutions to these.
But you know what I'm referring to, and that was a little more than a concept, that it wasn't, it wasn't a construction document either. But anyways, that being said, I, you know, like I say, anyways.
Okay, Mr. Popple? Do I hear a motion on this item?
I, I'd make a motion that we award the contract to LNV for the master plan. And I would add the extra that we get this one extra hotspot added into the scope. And if it means pushing the kayak, then we push the kayak, but I'm, I'm making a motion that we approve the, the contract with the, considerate, the council consider adding that hotspot into the scope of work.
Could you specify?
Yeah, okay, so it's Harper Street between Culberson and Lewis.
All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor of this item, if you'd let me know by the raised hand? Okay, thank you, and it passes unanimously. Okay, we go to eight A. This is, Ms. Brown, if you'll read that in for us.
Freedom's Path regarding the Kerrville VA Medical Center Phase Two.
All right, Mr. Craig Taylor, if you would share with us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to come and talk with you. Seven years ago, we signed a lease with the VA Kerrville Division to develop housing on the campus as a part of a nationwide effort by the VA to utilize property that they had for the benefit of veterans vis-à-vis housing. After many years, we were finally able to develop Freedom's Path Phase One, which is a forty-nine unit multifamily development on the campus with a multipurpose community center, which is professionally managed by Pinnacle Management. It's done very well, we're providing those forty-nine units. When we did that development, and Michael Wellborn is here, Michael did our initial site plan, we carved out another one-point-one acre location there for a Phase Two. And it is now a possibility that we can move forward with Phase Two. The way this is financed is through, programmed through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. We finance Phase One this way, and we are hoping to be able to finance Phase Two, if you support us, with housing tax credits. And these are allocated by TDHCA to developers. Developers then take that and they sell those credits to a company that needs a federal tax break, and they, the company then puts the money into the project. And because we can then buy down the cost of the project in terms of debt, we can offer lower rents. So these properties come with some rent and income restrictions as well. To apply to TDHCA is highly competitive. Texas is a very, very competitive state. It's, the state is divided up into thirteen regions, which are urban and rural, so there are twenty-six pots of money that can be accessed. The state usually allocates one or two projects in each of those regions or subregions, so this is in subregion, or rural region nine. To score enough points, there are two things that any developer is going to need from the local government. The first is a resolution of support for the project. So, as I sent the letter out, this would be no more than forty-eight units, but forty-eight units or less, with an income restriction range from a low of thirty percent to a high of eighty percent. Let me just, a little aside, that eighty percent ability did not exist when we did Phase One. That eighty percent ability of median income was created in the Tax Reform Act last year. So it allowed us to expand the income criteria. One of the criticisms, and it's legitimate criticism of Phase One, is that a lot of people wanted to live there because it was so nice, but because of the income restrictions we had, we could not move in then, that we would not have been in compliance. So this gives us the opportunity to expand the income spectrum, if you will. So we would need a resolution of support, and I could provide as much information as you need on that. And then the second thing is, a, it's a one-point category, but every point matters. We need a commitment of funding by the local government of at least two hundred and fifty dollars. And that can be in the form of cash of some sort, or it could be in the form of some kind of deferred fee.
So we could take up a collection right now, right?
I can.
Just get that done. Sorry.
No, no, that's great. And let me just say that in Phase One, that requirement was two hundred thousand dollars, and the Home Depot Foundation made a grant to the City of Kerrville, and the City of Kerrville made a grant to the project for that two hundred thousand, which was the way we got by on that. And it bore fruit, and, you know, it's a wonderful development. Now it's just two hundred and fifty dollars, but it could be in a waiver of building permit fees or other kind of plan review fees or that sort of thing. So, the final piece of this is, this application, well, two pieces, this application is due March first, so we're gonna have to really work on that. I submitted the pre-application yesterday. So the way that the process works is you self-score your pre-application, and our pre-application scored a hundred and nineteen points. Last year, two projects got funded in Region Nine, and I think it's pronounced Comal County, and they both pre-app scored a hundred and twenty points. So we are down one point from the maximum that could possibly be scored. And just the reason is, the state incentivizes developers to put their projects in high-income areas because of a lawsuit that went to the US Supreme Court in Texas, which said that Texas process was concentrating property. So now there's an incentivization to put these projects in higher-income census tracts. The census tract where the VA is, is in what is called a Quartile Three tract. Immediately across the highway is a Quartile Two tract. So, that Quartile Two tract would have brought two points, whereas a Quartile Three only will bring us one point, not because of Quartile Three, but because we're real close to Quartile Two, anyway. So it gets off into the weeds. Point in all of that, and the reason I wanted to come tonight with no action or anything, is to meet y'all, because none of you were here five or six years ago when we started this process the first time, and to let you know that we would very much like to do this project, but to say that there's a possible chance we won't be able to do the project, because this pre-app now, is, the final app, pre-app is due tomorrow, that gets posted to the webpage for TDHCA of every development in all of Texas. And so, we'll be able to look at the competition in the twelve counties in Region Nine. And if three or four of those, or even two, score a hundred and twenty, and we only score a hundred and nineteen, then in all likelihood, it's a moot point. We're not gonna spend the tens of thousands of dollars it takes to even submit an application. On the other hand, if we're at a hundred and nineteen and there's nobody else that can beat us, then we're gonna go ahead and submit, subject to, with your willingness, me coming back here and asking you to pass a resolution of support, and to authorize somebody in the city to write a letter of support saying that you will fund us an amount of at least two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I fail to do something. I, I mentioned your name, but would you give your name and address?
Absolutely. Craig Taylor, 191 Edgewood Avenue, Atlanta, Georgia, 30303. Let me just say, we, we set up a company, Communities for Veterans, to do these projects on VA Medical Center campuses around the United States. Our first one was in Heinz, Illinois, on the Heinz VA Hospital campus, seventy-two units. Our second project was here in Kerrville, forty-nine. Our third in Vancouver, Washington, fifty units. Our fourth in Chillicothe, Ohio, sixty units. Our fifth and sixth in Augusta, Georgia, seventy-eight units and twenty units. Our seventh in Fort Harrison, Helena, Montana, which is forty-two units. And then we finished the Phase Two at Heinz, Illinois, of fifty-two units. We're a little bit of a company, we are doing this for the love of country and for gratitude towards our vets. So, I just wanted to say that, that I am Atlanta, Georgia, I'm not Kerrville, Texas. We're using Kerrville folks wherever we can, and we, we love this city, and it's been a beautiful place for us to have a community, and thank y'all for that. But if we are able to move forward, I would certainly like the opportunity to come back in the next month and ask you for a resolution of support.
Let me, before you get away, any questions from the council?
I got, I got two, so current Phase One, you're, you're at capacity?
Yes and no, sometimes we are.
More or less, you are.
Not now. The end of the year, we, we have six vacancies there right now, and all of that occurred in the last month or so, so...
I mean, it's constantly changing, but yeah.
Yeah, it, right, the turnover, but yes, we stay at capacity.
In the competitive nature of what you, of this program, is it, is it the points only, or is it, could somebody else in this area be competing directly against you and have, if we got asked by somebody else, it, it, I mean, are we hurting either one of you by supporting both of you, and with a resolution? Or is it, is your application without our resolution gonna battle each other, and we're not really a part of it, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that, yes, I think pretty, real clear. Without your resolution, this thing is, it's not going, and that would be the case for any other developer. My counsel to local communities is to support anyone and everyone whom you feel comfortable supporting, and don't pick winners and losers. And why would I say that? Because apart from what I'm trying to do with veterans, is, if this happens and somebody builds forty-eight units, that's gonna pour nine to ten million dollars into your local community and fill a much-needed problem of workforce housing, and, or the shortage of workforce housing. And that's a big social need and a social good, so I don't want the competition part of it to preclude anybody from being able to provide that benefit. If that doesn't, funding doesn't go to Kerrville, it's gonna go to somewhere else in Texas. So I encourage local governments to support as many developers that come forward. Now, sometimes the rules are written that say, you can only support one. But it's probable that somebody could come into Kerrville and score a hundred and twenty points on the pre-app, not a hundred and nineteen, if they were in a high-income area, and they could do that, and we would lose to them. And I would be sorry, but...
But you wouldn't lose to them because of our, so if we supported both of you, you're not getting harmed by that, is what you're basically saying, okay.
Okay, let, let me be clear, is there somebody else out there who's bidding on this?
On this?
Yeah.
No, sir.
Not on this project, but there'll be other tax...
That funding, yeah.
Other, other projects.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, Mr. Popple?
How, how close is it to the existing apartments?
Next door, I mean.
Is it gonna be on the northeast side, I guess back towards the solar panels?
It's gonna be right on the front side, right next to the existing building. But it will face the VA campus, just like the existing building does.
Same kind of model of everything?
Yeah, three-story elevator, central atrium. It won't have the separate community building that the present building has, it would be within the atrium of the existing building.
Good, do you, Ms. Seggerman?
My question, did you come all the way from Atlanta just to tell us this tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Thank you.
I love Cedar Park.
You came to the right place. I, I was just curious, when will you know again, tomorrow, did you say?
Well, it's, it's several stages. So, the application, pre-apps are due tomorrow, and I haven't done one of these in five or six years in Texas, so I expect that these will be the scores, and the applications will be posted Friday or maybe early next week, and I'll know then. And then we have the six or seven weeks to hustle up and get an application in.
Well, good luck, I mean, the chips fall where they may, but still, that sounds like a very admirable cause.
Thank you.
Let me ask this, is, are the units only for veterans?
No, sir. We wish we would be able to serve only veterans, if you will, but the finances of these projects are such that you can't sit with a vacant unit. So if they're not veterans to fill the unit, you gotta fill the unit, because your operating expenses are paid there, and it gets off into some other technical things about tax credits. And, and so it goes back to a point I made earlier. One of the things we discovered is that we had a lot of veterans who wanted to live in Phase One, but made too much money. And, and the limit for Phase One is sixty percent of AMI. The AMI is, in Kirk County is about, I don't remember exactly, but about forty-five thousand dollars. So you take sixty percent of that, and you're looking at, people have to make less than twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars to live there. So we had a lot of vets who wanted to live there, but they just made too much money. So by expanding, going from sixty percent to eighty percent, we can expand the income with who is eligible to live there. We do have the possibility of making units, some units, non-restricted at all, and based on our experience, given the high quality of this housing, that we might be able to make that work financially. It, it's an exponent of difficulty when you take and do market rate our non-restricted units and the restricted, and I won't go into all of that.
But when the percentage changed, it didn't... But when the percentage changed, it didn't change Phase One percentages?
No, ma'am. In fact, I was saying today that sometimes when laws change, you can go back and ask for a waiver or something like that to expand it. And I am, I don't know of anybody who's done that anywhere in the country. But we're certainly going to ask, because that would solve... We turned down a veteran today to move in who made, you know, forty thousand, who would have been able to move in had we had an expanded income with her. Let me say one other thing, if you, a little bit of a drumbeat, as to whomever builds this kind of housing. This program was set up in nineteen eighty-six by President Reagan in the previous Tax Reform Act. And one of the reasons for doing this was that public housing was such an abysmal failure and such a blight on many communities, that the president wanted the private sector involved. And the president wanted to see high-quality housing built, even for working-class people, lower-income people. And so the private sector drives this, and the private sector is at risk. If these deals fail, it's not the federal government that loses the money. It's the developers and investors and so forth. And the second thing is, the housing is built at such high quality that it will compete with almost any other kind of Class A apartment community out there. So we're very proud of the product, and we're very proud to be able to do this for and with our veterans. But I, I am sorry that, for a lot of reasons, we're not able to make it veterans-only. But in this case, for economic reasons, we have had to open it up to non-veterans. That said, you need workforce housing, and we're proud to be able to provide workforce housing.
Mr. Taylor, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, okay. Financial update?
I do. I was just handed one for Clinton Thomas, Jr.
Oh, okay, on this issue?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. I'm a veteran myself, and I have seen the housing on the, on the VA. And there were many veterans that I spoke to that because of the amount of money they had to be able to make, were excluded. And so I would wish that that limit would be raised as well. I think he spoke about that. So if this is what the committee can do, I'm asking that it be raised as much as it can, because there's a lot of veterans that have gone to the program and because the way the rules were written, they weren't able to get in.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm very thankful.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Dozier, financial update?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Y'all have covered a lot of ground already. So I'm going to give a brief financial update. We are looking at financial statements through the end of November, so for the first two months of our fiscal year. Starting with the general fund, we have revenue of three point six million compared to expense of three point nine million on a year-to-date basis. It is normal to have a deficit at this time of the year because of the seasonal nature of our property tax collections. A couple of things to note on the revenue side. We're still a little higher than budget and a little higher than last year on the property tax side. We think that that is due to the property tax bills being mailed out earlier this year than they were last year. On the sales tax side, which is always our volatile revenue that we look at, it's down just a little bit in November compared to November of twenty seventeen. But we're very close to budget. And then the good news is, we have already received sales tax for the month of December. And we had a really large gain in December of seventeen percent. There were some one-time items included in that, that you have some notes on in your agenda bill. But overall, we were still up over five percent in December. And so we're trending a little bit better than budget on sales tax, which is always a good thing. On the general fund expenditure side of things, we're tracking close to budget, just slightly below. Moving on to the water fund, a summary there is we've had revenues of one point eight million compared to expenditures of one point nine million on a year-to-date basis. And looking at the revenues, this is where we're seeing some significant variances from budget. Water and reuse sales and sewer also are down significantly compared to budget, primarily due to the record rainfall that we received during the month of October. So, you know, it's, it is a very volatile revenue, depending on how things turn out the rest of the year. We might be able to make it up, but we are proactively looking at expenditures and things that we can, that we might be able to curtail or control to offset some of that lost revenue. On the water fund expenditure side, we're coming in a little bit lower than budget right now. Our expenditures are looking fine there. Then looking at other funds, a few other funds to highlight. We have this new Development Services Fund this year. So this was something that we talked about during the budget workshop. We've broken this out of the general fund, and we want to have some better transparency around development services. So you can see that year-to-date, we have revenues of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand compared to expenditures of a hundred and eight thousand. And just to note, on the prior-year comparison there, I have pulled last year's revenues out of the general fund, so you can have something to compare. The golf fund is experiencing the same thing as the water fund. They definitely were hurt by the rainfall in October, and their revenues are down some. And on the hotel occupancy fund, we are showing revenues that do not match the expenditures. But we've had a large quarterly payment to the CBB, and we haven't received a full quarter worth of revenue. So it is, you know, something normal to expect at this time of the year. And then just to note from last month, we, we are going to present compared to budget and on, on a year-to-date basis, and then also compared to the prior year. We will definitely look at rolling time information. The Finance Department will, as we need to, to answer, you know, specific questions or look for certain trends. But we'll continue presenting in this manner, since it's consistent with the way we're required to budget and our required financial reporting. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
So the, so the last, the last comment, so I think maybe by the comment, it sounds like maybe you guys misunderstood what I was asking for last month. I wasn't asking to replace the comparisons that we do. I was asking to add to it, in my view, for the sake of transparency, but also, I think it's actually less confusing. For the simple reason that when we try and do any trend analysis whatsoever, if anybody who, who wants to look at that could see it, they would want to see a longer trend than a month or two, which is what we're looking at with the year-to-date at the beginning of a fiscal year. When we're doing budget versus revenue, that's one thing. But when we're doing revenue versus expense, what, what can you know from a month or two? I mean, it gets us too micro-focused on a small time. So it, it's, the request is to make a report that can just be a push-button, kick out the basic departments. And a twelve-month rolling time period kind of puts a wash on what we're looking at right now. Like you'll, you'll show one department, it'll be short, you'll have to speculate as to why it's, you know, you'll have to analyze why that trend is that way. Maybe you don't even have to analyze it if it's a year-long trend. I mean, you guys do what you like, but that's what the request was about.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And yes, on those detail analysis items, we definitely do that kind of thing within the Finance Department. We just feel like, for the sake of, of, you know, not confusing anyone and being consistent with our reporting requirements, we'll continue to report like this to council each month.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We come to appointments to the Kerrville Charter Review Commission. Ms. Brown, would you present that?
Yes, sir. And on November twenty-seventh, you approved the chart, council charge two and schedule for the Charter Review Commission. It's supposed to be a seven-member board, and I have thirteen applications. And I put hard copies at most of your places for tonight. And we had two late applications, one from Mr. Garcia and one from Mr. Richards. But I have included those in, in the hard copies that I gave you. So I will get, turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Let me say that in this case, and these other boards that we're going to do appointments on tonight, we have more people applying than, than can serve, given the number of people for each of those boards. So there are some good people and good applicants that are not, you know, not going to be named to the boards. But I hope that we do a good job of getting some really good folks on these. And I would, I would like for, for the seven people to serve on the Charter Review Commission, could I have a motion in regard to that?
Mayor, I have a, I have a couple of speakers for this item.
Okay.
The first one is Mario Garcia.
Okay.
I've got something to say after everyone speaks, Mayor.
You what?
I've got something to say after everyone speaks. I just want to run something by the council.
All right.
Good evening. Coming up here every time, it's very humbling. I could have stood here all night. The gentleman that talked about the trees, I played on those trees. That's my grandparents' lot. My son knows that. Every time I go to H E B, I point out the corners of the area and where the house was and everything. And they mentioned the trail in Shriner, and I used to take, I used to go through that dry creek all the time, walking through here. This whole thing, you understand, is that this is where I'm from. This is who I am. I, I think we all can probably share that title, too. This is where I'm from, this is where I was raised, this is who I am. And, you know, having a son who's interested in government is kind of really pushing me to think, you know, I have not participated. I have not put the energy into, you know, part of my community. And because of that, I had a meeting with you and Mr. McDaniel about Kaliakurt last week, and I appreciate that. And, and you got to understand that I was raised here, and so I really didn't have a father figure around. So I looked at all the fathers that are around. And so a guy that doesn't have a father, what he does is he watches everybody else's father. And he picks up little things. And so when I have the meeting, what I have is to tell you that I'm doing for my son what I wish my father would have done for me. And so in that sense, I feel like I need to be involved more. And I'm asking that you consider me for the Charter Review. Why not? This is the constitution of our, of our city. And I'd really be honored if you would appoint from the floor me to do my duty and to be, and basically do what, be a part more of this community than I have been. And then also to, you know, I always tell my kids that, you know, we all tell our kids to take risks, do all this kind of stuff. But how many of us do that, right? I mean, we, don't be afraid, don't be scared, do it. And yet, at the same time, how many of us do that? And so I'm, actually, when they say you got to move your tree, you know, I, we have a saying in my family that I need to move my tree because they're going to drop off of my tree. I better make sure I'm in good soil and good sunlight and good rain. And so I'm asking that you consider me for the Charter Review, for the commission, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr....
I have another speaker that signed up, Mr. Clinton Thomas, Jr.
Okay.
Thank you once more. You know, I'm, I'm new at coming to the city council meetings, and I'm just trying to learn everything I can. And one day, would love to be on one of the boards. But tonight, I'm just, was just seeing Mr. Garcia and his son, and I was really moved because of what he is trying to do. So all I'm saying is, I'm trying to second his request that if he's qualified, that he might consider Mr. Garcia. Thank you.
All right, okay. Mr. Thomas, sometime, look at an app, one of our applications at the City Secretary's Office about, you know, about one of the committees and boards for yourself.
Thank you, sir.
All right, okay, all right.
If he fills one out, Mario, you got to be here to plug it, right?
Mr. Bockel?
I was just, the process of making these appointments, I would like to see us all appoint one person and then appoint the other two as a majority, kind of like I stated the last, the last time we had this discussion. Kind of follows what we did with the comprehensive plan, and ensures that we have a diverse group, and we're not having a group that's kind of one-sided.
The, then I would say, well, then, do you want, do you want to make nominations?
I'll make an appointment, each place makes an appointment and then...
Oh, oh, no, no, no. We're going to, we're going to vote as a, as a council, yeah.
Why is that? Why wouldn't you not want to, why wouldn't?
That, that's best, I mean, because we're voting as a body.
We did the same thing with the comprehensive plan.
So if he nominated one, and then I nominated one, and you nominated one, and somebody made a motion to vote those two?
I think we get it, we get them out, we get the, somebody give us seven names and let's see where we go.
I like Peggy McKay on there.
I'm prepared to, I'm prepared with this slate. Peggy McKay is on the list that I have here.
Okay.
If, so I would like to make a motion to nominate these seven. And I would also like to say there were lots of good people on there, so. We have a second. We'll need a second.
Okay.
Wait, I need, I need to, I'm sorry, I need to clear a motion. I don't know, I need to know who you're nominating.
Nominate seven people, but we don't have a second.
Okay.
I need to name everybody, and then we'll do that.
Before you make your motion, can, can we discuss then a little bit about, before you create your slate, can we discuss, like, he, he was going to talk about Peggy McKay. I actually came prepared to, I was going to nominate Mario. So basically, I mean, I, we can talk about all of them, but to not discuss any of them, just go with your slate, seems a little less like...
No, we don't have to do that. I mean, she...
Why don't we all have a nomination of our own and, and vote that, at that moment, on that name? Because if you get, I, I mean, my, mine may match yours five to seven, but it wouldn't be the complete seven.
I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting the nomination of Mario Garcia.
Okay.
So we'll work that into what you've got as a slate.
Okay, so you want to vote on each individual who's nominated?
Well, if he, if he's suggesting Peggy McKay, she's already on our list. So if, if there's a way for you to look at your slate and...
Well, I would just like to say, okay, I agree. I would, I would agree with nominating Peggy McKay. In other words, rather than...
We'll, we'll go down the line and see who we nominate. You nominate Peggy McKay.
Well, George did, and I, if you're going to ask for...
Vincent did.
I'm sorry, okay, that side did.
Vincent did, all right. So you want to nominate somebody else?
I'll nominate Brenda Craig.
Wait, I'm, I'm sorry. Are we doing one at a time?
We're discussing something, so you don't have to write anything down.
Because you're making motions, so I need to...
No, we're just, we're just making a motion. We're just, we're making a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right, then, we have...
Peggy and Brenda, and Mario.
Okay, so are we voting on Mario?
No, we're just trying to make the seven slate, I thought.
Okay.
Wouldn't be very comfortable with all of us voting.
But we're going to have to vote on them individually.
You're going to have to, because otherwise, I might not agree with the whole motion for seven.
Peggy, Brenda, Craig.
Mario.
Mario?
And now I'm going with, yeah, there you go.
Okay, all right.
You.
And, and so Peggy, Brenda, you nominated Mario?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to nominate Karen Yanis. Okay.
I'd like to see Mike Sigerman.
Okay, Mike Sigerman. All right, we'll go back to Place One.
For, for another one?
Another one.
Alan Coon.
Okay.
I don't, I don't really have a second. I'm just, I'm just looking to pick one and join the team on the other two.
All right, all right. I'm, I'm going to suggest Stephen Fain.
Still missing one.
We're missing one or two.
That makes seven.
That makes seven.
I mean, how many do we have?
That makes seven, so if, if...
Okay, so let's, let's vote on these individually. All in favor of Peggy McKay, raise hand.
I think we can go ahead. I mean, at that point, no?
No.
Okay, all right. Peggy McKay, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Brenda Craig, Brenda Craig.
Are you doing this all right?
Wait, 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 wait. Are you all now going one by one?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that's what we were going to do from the very beginning.
Yeah, that was the idea. Each person nominate somebody.
As long as y'all are clear and, and City Secretary's clear, I'm okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Did you get that one down? Peggy McKay.
We just voted Peggy McKay on.
Yanis? Brenda, Brenda Craig.
My question is...
Who made a motion?
Or I need a motion? I need a motion and a second.
Okay.
I'm going to point Peggy McKay to the...
Okay.
I'll second that.
Charter review.
And then the vote was five to zero.
You, you, okay, would you make the motion, Brenda Craig?
I'll make a motion, nominate Brenda Craig, yes.
Okay. And who made the motion on Mario?
Well, no, we need a second. I'll, I'll second Brenda.
Okay, you're going to second Brenda. Okay, Mario?
All in favor?
No, no, we're going to...
No, wait, 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 wait.
We've only got one motion at a time.
Yeah, we're...
Is that what you want us to do, one motion at a time per person?
I want y'all to follow...
What, what do we want to do?
The rules, which is either a direct motion or you need a nomination.
Let's take the motion on Peggy McKay. Do we have a second?
We already did that.
I thought we did that.
Did that.
Yeah, we're on Brenda now.
Peggy's in.
Peggy's in, we're on Brenda.
Brenda Craig is in.
We need a vote on Brenda. Yeah, we need a vote on Brenda.
All right, all in, do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
All in favor of Brenda? Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Mario Garcia, do we have a second?
I make a motion that we place Mario Garcia on the...
I'll second him.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. All right, motion fails. Okay.
Opposed.
Karen Yanis, I make that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second, all right. All in favor of Karen Yanis, raised hand, okay.
Did you get the vote?
Yes.
Yeah, Mike, okay, Mike Seigerman?
I'll make a motion.
He made the motion. Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, all in favor of Mike Seigerman? It passes, three, two.
All opposed.
Alan Cohn?
All opposed, but I would like to say on that, that it's not anything about him. It is to do with, I think it's a bad idea to have a councilman and a Charter Review Committee married couple, but that's why that vote is the way it is.
Okay, Alan Cohn, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, appoint Alan Cohn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, okay, all in favor of Alan Cohn, if you'd let me know by the raised hand? Okay, fails, two, three. Stephen, Stephen Fine, you have a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, okay, I'm sorry, I made the motion on Stephen Fine.
How many have we appointed?
The second is Ms. Eichner.
This is six.
We're six.
Yes. If he's voted, then this is number six.
All in, all in favor of Stephen Fine, let it be known by the raised hand? Right, passes four, oh.
I think that was a five, right?
We need, we need, we need, we need one more.
Mario.
Already voted on Mario, I think.
I'd like to recommend John Harrison.
Yeah, okay.
That's all the nominations that they've made.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
All right, motion second for John Harrison.
I need one more person.
All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand?
I'm sorry, John Harrison.
And it passes three, two.
I think we need one more.
I thought we did two.
Well, he's not asking, he's all opposed, so, yeah. I was three to two.
I just have six.
No, that's seven.
That's seven.
Let me explain who they are.
Okay, let me, let me tell you who they are. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Alan Cohn, Peggy...
No.
I think Alan Cohn was...
I like his...
That was a two, three vote.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not good to me.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, Stephen Fine was five to zero, Peggy McKay was five to zero, Brenda Craig was five to zero, Mario Garcia was two to three, Karen Yanis was five to zero, Mike Seigerman was three to two, John Harrison was three to two.
How many is that, one, two, three, four, five?
So that's the seven, four, Charter Review.
I've got...
That's six.
Six. Six, I think.
Then you've got Peggy McKay, Brenda Craig, Karen Yanis, Mike Seigerman, Stephen Fine, John Harrison, how many is that?
That's six. Okay, I'll make a nomination that we, I would like to nominate Greg Richards.
All right.
I'll second, I'll second.
Nomination for Greg Richards. Got a second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and Mr. Richards is on it.
Okay.
All right. Now...
I don't know what George voted.
Okay. On Animal Services Board, nine B, if you'll read that in for us.
Okay. The city council approved the inter-local agreement with Kerr County for animal and library services at your meeting on October 23rd. The agreement affirms that the city may appoint one out of five of the newly-created Animal Services Advisory Committee, adopted by Court Order 37057, and I have five applications from Tammy Baumann, Karen Guerrero, Randall Johnson, Arthur Muddling, and Jennifer Sargent.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we appoint Karen Guerrero to...
I second that motion, Karen Guerrero to serve on the Animal Services Advisory Board.
I know she's very involved, I've talked to her, she's very committed to this, and I think she's a great pick.
Yeah, I think so, too.
That's okay, go ahead.
All right. Any, any, anything else?
Can I nominate somebody else?
Yes, you can.
But we need to vote on that, don't we? That's right.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, for Karen Guerrero. All in favor, if you let it be known by the raised hand? It's four, four, one, all opposed by the same side.
That's, it's done, so that's good.
Okay, okay, appointments to the Recovery Community Coalition, and I am pleased with the number and quality of persons who have applied for, for this position. I wanted to ask Mr. Bockel and Ms. Eichner if you have comments for us after having interviewed the candidates.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Jevie.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good candidates, good candidates, and just so many of them, and I wish we had more room for, for more people. As we're, we're doing this, there is one position that we cannot fill, and that is the position of a male owning a sober home. Yes, we did not have anyone to apply for that, so that's the one that we, we will not be filling that position. So what we would like to do, first of all, is I make a motion that we reappoint for a second term the following four individuals. Leanne Fitzpatrick, Laura Goodwin, Sabine Kinnel, Kinnel, I'm sorry, and Dale Trees.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion, a second, and these two council persons are the interview team for this, for this committee. The, any further discussion on that, motion, reappoint these four. All right, all in favor of reappointing these four, if you let it be known by the raised hand? It passes unanimously, okay?
Okay. And then, we need one person to fill the, the spot of MHDD, and we have an applicant for that. His name is Ross Robinson, and we would like to make a motion to vote, or to elect Ross Robinson to the position of MHDD.
He is head of that mental health entity for this area. We have a second?
Yes.
A second, okay, Mr. Bockel, all right. All in favor of appointing Ross Robinson to the Recovery Coalition Committee? If you let it be known by the raised hand, we pass it unanimously.
And then the last, we need one individual, one additional individual that does not fit any particular category, and for that position, we would like to nominate Marissa Dotson for that position.
Okay, all right.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. All in favor of Marissa Dotson going on that committee? Okay, great. Now, folks, we've got 13 people to appoint to the Senior Services Advisory Committee.
Do it one at a time? Should we do it one at a time?
No, no.
That is not, that is not a lot of fun. I'll tell you what I will do.
Don't we do planning zoning?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think...
As a suggestion, we've got a pad here that Cheryl can write on, and just as, as y'all call names out, we can put them on the list, and then you can go down this list one by one again if you want to.
All right.
If that helps.
Let me, may I ask another question, and the answer to this may have to be no. We've got 16 good people, this is a brand-new committee, is there any possibility that we could enlarge it to 16?
Or just have three alternates, and as we're P and Z, it fills in.
16 sounds fine to me, I wouldn't bother me.
We can't do it tonight, though.
Right, he's correct. You can point 13 now and then come back and expand it, and then appoint the other three.
Okay. I would like to recommend that we do that. We've got 16 good people and...
Then if that's the case, may I recommend that tonight, we go with the first 13 on the list?
Wait, wait, don't write anything. Okay, no, no, put it back up. We got it out, we're going to write something. I want you to write one name on there, Sylvia Lewis.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just put her name on the top, and we can talk about the rest of them.
Hey, quit, that was my number one.
That's fine.
Okay.
She was on my list, too.
Yeah, okay, now, let me, let me run through that, okay, of the first 13, and then we're looking, appointing the other three if we decide to do that, but that would mean Linda Abels...
You want to write them all down?
Yeah.
Why not?
Well, I don't know. Do you need to write them down, or you want to write them, Ms. Brown?
I'm...
You can take them from the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to say them, you don't have to write them, she'll take the first, first 13.
Oh, darn, he was so excited about that.
Okay, Linda Abels, Misty Blevins, Cynthia Bergen, Karen Burkett, Susan Eklund, Marie Juton, Waverly Jones, Kristin Fama, Sylvia Lewis, Robert Ogil, Nicholas Oprea, Diana Paul, Rebecca Pizor, and then, then that's, then we've got three more.
All right, and our intention is to come back and...
And look at, you know, adding, you can make it a 16-person committee or alternates.
Okay. Sounds great.
The crowd is getting, the crowd is getting tired, I can tell. So, we need to move on.
Okay, so we need, we need a...
Yeah, okay. I make a motion, we take those 13. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there anyone here that we didn't call? I mean, if there is, you actually showed up, and you should probably be on the list.
No.
All right.
Okay.
We're just...
Both, we bring the, both the journalists on this committee, so, okay, do I, do I second to that, those first 13?
I'll second if somebody...
I second.
He seconded it already.
Mr. Rudy seconded it. All in favor, by the raised hand? Okay. Now, P and Z, we can go into executive session, but I think we can avoid that. Do we have a motion about...
We can't really go in anyways.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, as traditionally done, most of the time, when you've had sitting, reapplying board members who in good standing want to continue and have reapplied, I'd make a motion that we nominate Ruston Zuber, thank you, Garrett Harmon, and Bob Waller to be reappointed to their current positions, and Bill Morgan would continue to be an alternate.
Okay.
That would be mine.
I second that.
I just have a question, because we nominated, or we appointed Bill Morgan and Trisha Byerman, I believe, and then we had someone step down, Trisha was put on as a regular member, and we moved Bill to the extended, to 2020 expiration date, and so when we appointed Jim Brown, he filled in the 19. That, that's what was my understanding, what we did. Is that not correct?
I don't know.